Good to go, Kelly.
Okay, so how many folks we have here?
We have Councilmember Dochet, Councilmember Farrell, Councilmember Hawey, Councilmember Anani, Councilmember O'Brien, and Councilmember Igo.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, May 3 Caucus of Albany Common Council. It's our caucus prior to our main meeting. Just for the record, Councilmembers Dochet, Anani, O'Brien, Farrell, Hawey, Igo are in the room thus far, along with staff clerk Danielle Gillespie, Research Council John Raffio Pichardo, as well as Corporation Counsel Brett Williams. All right, and we have a few other visitors.
Joining us also.
Okay, Councilmember Flynn has also joined us. And so I will just go through our agenda. First up would be approval of minutes from a previous meeting. I will be offering the April 19, 2020 meeting minutes for passage.
And there was a modification to those minutes. Councilwoman Dochet had pointed out some inaccuracies, and we did go in and update the minutes. Included Chiquita DeArbo's last name corrected Adams, the spelling of Adam from the Albany County land bank's name, and the correcting of Spurber Way.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie, for that. Okay, on the rest of the local laws are held onto ordinances introduced. We have ordinance 125121 by Ms. Love. That'll be a referral to finance. Okay. And next on the agenda is ordinance 135121 by Ms. Fahy. And I forgot to read the title before. This relates to small so wireless facilities, facilities in city rights away. That's Ms. Fahy, and it'll be going to planning. Restor held on to resolutions introduced. Resolution 415121R by Ms. Farrell. Adjustments in salaries in the Department of Law. That'll be a referral to finance. Okay. Next, Resolution 425121R by Ms. Farrell. Relating to salary adjustments in the Community Development Agency. That'll be a referral to finance. Next, Resolution by Ms. Frederick and Mr. Johnson, 435121R. As it relates to the transfer station that Waste Management wants to set up in the South End to accept solid waste. I believe that'll be, that'll be a pass. We discussed it. Okay. Next, Resolutions 445121R by Ms. Love. And that's for Mr. Garland renaming a part portion of Clinton Avenue. In his honor, we will, that'll be going to the General Service Committee. It's 445121R. Next, Resolution 455121R by Mr. Anani. And that's a resolution declaring May Bike Month. We're all co-sponsors on that. There'll be a pass voting on that.
Kelly, going back to 435121R, did you, are we all co-sponsors on that one, too?
We were, and I did ask Caucus the other day.
Tell you the list that I have so far, if that's helpful. I have Farrell, Hawey, O'Brien, Dochet, Kimbrough, Conti, Anani, Igo, Ballerin, and Fahy.
So, yeah, I, when it's a partial listing, I'm just wondering how we do that. Because sometimes like when it's, when it's everybody, as in the Bike Month one, Corey usually just announces it, so we don't all have to ask to co-sponsor. So do you want us to again ask to co-sponsor on on the Waste Management Resolution? Or is somebody going to announce who's co-sponsors? I just.
No, I get it. The thing is, we have these discussions at meetings, and we get a mix of, or even sometimes everyone commits and says, hey, I'm a co-sponsor. But then we jump in and start to vote, and everyone starts, you know, acknowledging their co-sponsorship. So I guess if they're partial sponsors, then we'd like for Ms. Gillespie to mention who the sponsors are. But if it's all of us, then it's a voice vote, and I mean, I guess.
Doesn't it speed things up, too, that if we're all co-sponsors, we can just do a voice vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone co-sponsors on the resolution, yes.
Yeah.
This particular one, I don't think everyone indicated their desire to be a co-sponsor.
Okay, if they don't, then we'll just, you all have to see it when you vote. I'm for it.
Okay. Okay, back to resolutions held. We have Mr. Anani's Resolution 72120R as amended. We'll be voting on that. It's a, the Safe Climate Resolution. That'll be a pass. We'll be voting on it. And then next is myself, Mr. Johnson, with the support of President Ellis, the Resolution 10211120R for Edwin Spurber Way down on Erie Boulevard. So, and that will be voted on also. And I thought a few members expressed an interest in being co-sponsors, but I don't know that it was, it was all of us. So I guess we'll just do it by the, the normal way of voting. And that is.
Kelly, there's a lot of people that don't go to caucuses sometimes frequently. So maybe we just have to stick to the old way or ask right in the beginning. Does anybody, you know, want to be co-sponsors?
Yeah.
Be consistent, you know?
Right, yeah, no, I, we have the meetings where we discuss this stuff, and then we end up doing it a different way. So, Ms. Gillespie, could you just, we'll ask, we know on the ones that we're all. But on ones where we don't, and everyone hasn't committed, I guess we'll just, you can ask in the beginning. Yeah, ask in the beginning, and then, then we'll go to vote and call the law. And that.
Nothing's changed on the local laws, all local laws are held, right?
Yeah, no changes, yeah.
Um, so Kelly, if, if you, could I talk a little bit about, great.
Yeah, we got our.
So, the Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Ballerin have said that they would report they are, they and Corey and Zanya are all the official representatives from the council on the COVID Recovery Task Force. So they said that they would report on that. And I just want to do a clarification because there's definitely been a lot of things in social media. I think it is fantastic. We are so fortunate to have members that spend time on things and dig into things. And I, the more people that do that, the better. So I'm thrilled for any council member that does that. But there is no secret task force. This is the same COVID Recovery Task Force that I've talked about over and over again in caucus, that there was just a press release sent out about today, that there was a press release sent out about earlier. No secret task force. It's just that not everybody, the only people that got an invitation were the people who are on the committee. And no secret task force. So for anybody that is out there thinking that there is a secret task force having to do with any department, budget, COVID, police, anything, there is no secret task force. I really want to say this because I've had to spend a lot more time on it than I've wanted to or have time for. So I, and I also wanted to give a quick update. As everyone knows, we passed through the resolution saying that as of June 1st, we look forward to having all of our, our employees above the $15 an hour living wage. I connected with the mayor's office. They are prioritizing that, that negotiation. So they're working through that. But I did share with them, and I do want to let everyone know. Well, we obviously have to have Finance Committee meetings. So there will still be Finance Committee meetings, but until the point that we have that resolved, I am not comfortable doing, aside from this upcoming meeting, we're not changing that. But future meetings, until that is resolved, I'm not comfortable doing salary change adjustments in the committee. I really think this needs to be prioritized. The mayor's office was completely understandable about this. They are, they are fully on board with his dedication. But I just think it's an important thing to continue to have the desire to move forward. So I said that this is the first step, and we will continue to have reminders. So I just wanted to update everyone on that. And I also, if Alfredo and Jamel, if you don't mind jumping in, Judy was there as well. If you want to report as well, Judy, that would be great, and share with us what has happened at that task force meeting. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I apologize. I'm trying to use the audio from my phone because when I try to use the audio from my computer, it kicks me off. Is it possible to share my screen, JR?
Yep.
How do I do that?
It should say share screen at the bottom on your computer.
You gave me the eligibility to do it?
Yeah, I did.
Can anybody see that?
Again.
Can you see it?
It's not up yet. It looks like you're attempting to share, it just hasn't, there we go, it's there.
Sorry. So what I'm, what I'm going to share is part of the PowerPoint that was shared with us. So a lot of the, a lot of the meeting was basic background information, introductions of everybody that was in the room, background about where, where we are, where we were, some information that was given was similar. Much of this information that was shared at the Finance Committee. So as you all know, total allocation for the City of Albany is 85, 200, 200,008, $82,416. This is how we did compare to other cities and the county. So here's some of the requirements of how we, we've got to look at using this funding. It all has to be used by December 31, 2024. I think many of us already are aware of that. Most of it has to be focused on specific sectors, how it, how, that have been impacted by the, by the pandemic, assistance for housing, small business, nonprofits, and other impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Here's, and this is, this is what was shared at the Finance Committee of, of forecast projections of how part of these funds are going to be used to make up for the lack of revenue. So as you all were, we've lost revenue in 2020 that affected our city dramatically, forcing us to do some real difficult, difficult decisions. 2021, we would have also been in a tight bind. But this is, this is again a shot that was shown to us at a Finance Committee meeting, showing that how these 85,000, $85 million is going to assist the city from, from now and and from 2020, it's going to put back some of the funds that we've used, some of our reverse, we, we serve funds that we've used in the past to get us to 2020, put some of that back. But this shot shows us how we're going to use this fund to stay afloat till 2024. Any questions on that? Because to me, this is a really critical one, because this really is telling everyone the, one, the need that we were in, and the difficult situation we would have been in if we didn't get this federal help that we've been requesting for the last year and a half. And it shows that a lot of it is going to just help keep us afloat. And I think that's very important for us to be transparent with the community. Because when you look at these numbers, and you look at 85 million, and you're looking at the fact that 58 of it is to address revenue shortcomings, to keep us from having to make difficult decisions like layoffs or difficult decisions like cutting programs. You see how critical that funding was, and that it was not a windfall. By no means, it was something that we needed and that we're going to be using for the next few years to keep us in a good place. It talks a little bit about why the individuals were chosen. And there was individuals from all different industries, from, from universities, some from the school district, from the restaurants, from all different sectors of our academy were in the room. So it shows you a little bit about why those individuals were there. Shows you the different sectors of, of individuals that were in the room. And I've already said why they were there. Any questions on this?
Do we have a list of those folks?
Yeah, in the mayor's press release.
Yeah, but the mayor's press release was just sent out, and we all got it, and there's a full listing in there.
Thank you.
Well, it's a different question. Was everybody on that list at the meeting? I wonder who's at the meeting, that round in the list, was everybody there?
There was a lot of people there. I wasn't able to attend in person, so I had to attend in Zoom. I would say, I would think, I honestly think everybody was there. The, the amount of time that it took to go around the table, and the fact that there was probably six or seven of us on Zoom. So I would say that if you didn't have 100% attendance, you had in the 90s. But I couldn't tell you that I, I couldn't tell you, I didn't, I didn't take attendance. But I can, I can definitely tell you at least 90 to 95% were there.
Well, that's my next question. What's that?
Yeah, I wasn't there, Jack.
Well, did anybody take notes? Was there minutes on this meeting already?
There, yes, there are minutes taken that will be shared. I've asked the mayor's office to make sure to circulate any PowerPoint, so we should be getting this in minutes from the meeting. I don't know if the minutes are done yet, but I will definitely be checking in on that.
All right, thank you.
And here's the timeline. I also think this is important for people to see, because this is, you know, it's, it's, it's happening, and it's happening quickly. So it talks about the kickoff, which was in April, the needs assessment that's going on now, a draft to be done in June, and final, finalized recommendations in July. So this is also key for people to, you know, know. So that it, very, very little was done other than an overview. I shouldn't say very little. A good overview was shared. Some of the information for council members that have been in meetings already, you know, we have already seen it. So a lot of it may not have been new to us. But it was, it was, for those who may have not attended our finance meetings and may not have had privy of this information, there was a lot of good information sharing to get everybody up to speed of where we are. Any questions on this?
Alfredo, I just wanted to note that actually, if we, if you click the link that was in the press release, there is a, you can get to the minutes and the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, good. That's, that's, you know, that's part of why I wanted to show this, because I wanted people to see what was shared at that meeting. I don't want individuals to feel, I don't want anyone to feel like this, this ending being done, you know, it's not being fully transparent. So it's, I'm glad that that occurred. I didn't get an opportunity to see that from, I didn't get an opportunity to see that press release. So I'm glad that that's also being shared in that, in those means as well.
Alfredo, could you go back to the last slide regarding the timeline? Whoops, there we go. So this is interesting. The timeline doesn't show when the Treasury Guidelines and recommendations are going to come out that are needed for guidance on how municipalities are supposed to allocate this funding. Do you know when, has, has there, have task force members been provided with any information about when those are coming out?
I know there was some talk about that, but no, I don't have that, that specific information.
Well, in the meeting, they said that they didn't know when they were going to get guidance, and they hoped that they would get it soon. But I'm wondering if subsequently, there's been any further discussion? Because, you know, so my next, my follow-up question is, how do you make draft recommendations without having the guidelines?
Well, hopefully, we'll get the guidelines beforehand. I mean, I understand exactly where you're, where you're coming from, Judy. You know, I can't answer that question because I don't have that information in front of me. But I would agree, yes, we need to have the guidelines to be able to do the draft. I think what we can do now is need assessment. I think we all can, you know, I don't, I think we all know there's a lot of need in our communities, and we can start putting that on pen and paper and start looking at how we can use resources to benefit our most needing, most in need communities. I think we can, so I do think, you know, I think there's, like, everything that's been going on for the last 14 months, 15 months, a lot of things are up in the air. And a lot of things may not, you know, come in a timely manner that we'd like them to. But it doesn't mean that we can't start doing some work towards it, to try to get to a better, better, better place. So I agree with you 100%, Judy, and hopefully we'll have it before, before we start the drafting part in June.
Nice, just a quick note to, I just remind everyone that we are having a Finance Committee meeting where we will have staff there that will be able to answer questions. So if we could maybe keep the questions on questions that Alfredo and Jamel can answer, and that it's not necessarily a staff question.
Okay, so I've been asking questions about the task force now for six months since the announcement. And so what I'm trying to figure out, when they make the recommendations, are those going to be recommendations for specific awards? Is the task force going to be deciding what organizations receive it? Are task force members and their organizations going to be eligible for funding?
So Judy, just to, you were at the meeting, were those answers, because Alfredo and Jamel were at the same meeting that you were at. I think that they're great questions, but I just think that they're more appropriate for the Finance Committee meeting instead of to Alfredo and Jamel that were at the same meeting that you were at.
And I just want to add something else, Judy. We had nothing to do with who was at the meeting or who was, you know, so that, that wasn't any, anything that.
I know, that's part of my frustration.
I just will say that I don't think any decisions can be made by anybody until the Treasury regs come out. And they just updated their website like about, about two weeks ago, but it hasn't issued the CFR stuff yet, so.
Right, right. So I just, I, my point is that we have this task force. And I can, while, while we're now getting some additional information about the task force, and I'm thrilled about that, we don't, give, one of the questions about having the meetings open or not depends upon whether they are playing an active role in crafting a part of our budget, making awards, et cetera. Either they're final decision makers and not advisory, or their recommendations will be rubber stamped, which is essentially the same as final. So those are critical questions. And frankly, I think the task force members should know as they're entering into this because there's also that issue about the ethics about this, that if you're sitting in a room with people who are then going to be getting money, that votes even more so for these meetings to be open and for the public to be able to have trust. They can see and observe as opposed to waiting for a report after the fact on this.
And again, if those questions weren't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to just say that I think, Julie, you have some excellent questions. And I'm, I volunteer that if you have questions that you want asked at these subsequent meetings, then please feel free to email me, and I can bring this up at our future meetings.
All right.
Yes, and it's already 7 o'clock as well. We'd like to start relatively in time. A lot of these questions can be asked at Finance Meeting as well.
I shared my questions, which essentially are a lot of these questions, in an email to Jenny that included the entire council about three weeks ago. And I'd be glad to forward that again.
I believe David has it. I've talked to him several times, and as you'll remember, those are questions that I asked you to write down to be used as an advisory role as they move forward. I've asked David for those answers. I will continue to ask him for them. I think it was an excellent thing to help them move forward and, and hopefully the right direction. I completely agree with you that this, that oversight is really important, and I appreciate you pushing on it. I just want to make sure that the right people are available to answer the questions.
I'm going to defer all other discussion on this. I'm not going to ask any other questions other than say, I'm talking to, partially, I'm talking to our representatives on the council about some of these issues, because we have been pushing and we haven't been getting answers. And I think that it's also good questions for the task force members to be keeping in mind as they're moving forward. Usually, a task force has a much better understanding about what their role is going to be, what the ethics are, how awards are going to be made. Usually a task force has a much better understanding about what their role is going to be, what the ethics are, how awards are gonna be made by the end of the first meeting, so um, and if not before that. So, thank you. I, I look forward to the continued dialogue.
And Judy, honestly, thank you for it because it is, the questions you're asking are very important. So I don't, I don't wanna make it sound like I don't appreciate it because I do. I just, I wanna make sure that they can answer them.
And I just wanna add one thing. I, I agree with you, Judy. I do think it should be fully transparent. I'm glad to hear that the PowerPoint's already been put out there and all the information's been put out there. Part of the reason why I shared the PowerPoint is I wanted to make sure people see what was shared that day so that, you know, we can be as transparent as we can. Um, I think that's the best way to handle any situation is you put it all out there uh and, and, and let people know the, the the real situations that we're dealing with. And that's why I want to really focus on some of those slides that tell the, the story of dollars and how a lot of those are gonna be used based on the short course that we were already expecting and based on the fact that we needed these funds. It was not uh something that was an, an optional situation. This was something that we needed. Uh, and I am glad that we have it and glad uh about it.
Thank you. And with that being said, we'll have to hold off on any further discussion because it is now
Uh, I, I, I think it's important that I know that we are planning
Yeah, both the Wusu and Kathy had their hands up. I, I completely understand being on time, but they both had their hands up. And I also just wanted to say a huge thank you to Alfredo and Jamel. And Alfredo, thank you so much for that really in-depth reporting and thank you, Jamel, too. Uh, and then I won't speak anymore and Kathy and Wusu, if Kathy, go ahead and then Wusu.
Uh, I, uh, thank you. Um, so Cory, I wanted to bring up the, I know we're gonna talk about the tear gas legislation at our next caucus, but I am concerned that we're gonna be in the same position we were um, at our last caucus before the last council meeting where, you know, the legislation didn't move forward. Uh, but what has changed since then? So I'm wondering for our next caucus, do we need, you, you have, do people have ideas about what more information is needed to have a, have a fuller discussion uh at this, uh, at our Wednesday caucus uh next week? Um, do we need to have Chief Hawkins back in? I, I think it's important that we just throw that out there and get and if anybody else has some input on that, um, I think it's important we do that ahead of time.
I just wanna remind everybody, May twelfth, we also have the school board coming to present the budget.
Nobody?
Can we delay the school board? We have all these other important things.
Well, the vote is on the eighteenth, so I think that um, we'll have the school board do their presentation first and then um, then do the discussion on the tear gas legislation. Um, we, I think we do plan to have uh police there. I'm not sure.
At the caucus?
Least, at the, the very least, the chief, uh, leadership.
Well, does it make sense for people to put questions together ahead of time to send?
And um, I, I, if anyone has any ideas, I think that, I mean, you can send them to staff, but I'm also happy to take them if anyone wants to send them. Um, I think we need to collect as much information as we can ahead of time. Kathy, I totally agree.
Okay, and you know, I was thinking of who, who else might we bring in, but honestly drew a blank on that.
And JR also sent out, um, and I'm pointing as if people are in the same thing. JR also just sent out a uh information on like all the different pieces of the tear gas legislation.
Okay, thanks. So we can send this to Dan, you, Danielle, maybe our questions to forward or to Kelly? Who should we be sending these to?
Just forward them to uh, to, to Danielle.
Okay. Thank you. Are you ready for Mr. Anani?
Go, go on, mister.
Oh, yeah, so I just had like two questions. One was more so um with the task force. And I think Judy um have been asking this for months now. Is the task force going to be like, have the final say as it relates to the eighty-five million dollars? Or are they serving as an advisory role?
No, it's completely, this is something that it has been said over and over again by the mayor. They are just an advisory role. They do not have any ability to hand out any money. Um, it is the federal funds were given and allocated in very specific um kind of buckets. So um, the restaurant recovery is an example. So the, the real purpose of this task force is to make sure that it's people in the community that are actually watching the different buckets and ensuring that um all of that funding is used. So if it's, or another thing is if it's used really quickly, um, then they can report back and say, there is a much bigger need for this. And then the mayor's office can get together a group of people to try to advocate for that. Um, or maybe it's not being fully used and there needs to be more work gotten out there. So it's, it's really in that role. It's not, there's no um funding. They're not able to give any funds out and that's not the intent of that task force.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Like you said, there's a lot of misinformation out there, uh particularly with the radio and also um, with social media. But uh, and my last one is just more so, and this is probably, we're getting our staff, you know, Michelle's replacement. Is that any discussions, anything you wanna talk about? Okay.
So we have, we did put a thing out, um, and we are, we're gonna go through resumes. Um, I'm actually really glad you brought that up because with all the other things we did, I thank you for that. Um, we did forget to do uh an update. Anybody that is able, interested or able to be on that um that interview panel, that interview panel, please let me know. Um, you'll be happy to know that um Joyce Love has already agreed to be on it. Um, she has been really incredible in our other uh hiring panel, so um I, I'm sure everybody will be super happy about that and thank you, Joyce, for that. Um, but yeah, thank you for asking that.
And Mr. President?
Thank you so much. I will call the order May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, common council meeting. Uh, can a clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President, if all members can unmute themselves so that they're able to respond to their name. Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin. Conti. Goshet.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Howie.
Present.
Igo.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kimbra.
Here.
Love. O'Brien.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Thirteen members present, two absent.
Thank you. And now uh we'll have our pledge of allegiance. So can the court pull up the flag and then after that we'll have a moment of silence. Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our public comment period. Anyone who signed up for the public comment period, you would need to state your name and your address for the record. You will have five minutes to speak upon any you'd like to speak upon. At the four-minute mark, I will let you know you have one minute remaining to close up your comments. Uh, at this time in the public comment period, uh, council members cannot answer your statements or your questions at that time. Uh, council members are not, cannot uh respond to you. If they choose to do so, council members may do so at a later point in the agenda of our meeting. Um, and so we, so with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
The first speaker that I have signed up is Lauren Manning.
Hi, um, my name is Lauren Manning. I live at eight Tyler Trace, Albany, New York, one-two-two oh seven, and I'm speaking as a resident tonight. So last week I watched as Chief Hawkins used racist dog whistles born out of reconstruction to describe scary black men who would commit violence and rape against wives of children, uh, the wives and children of officers. There is a long and painful history of painting black men as violent rapists in an effort to criminalize them. And she called, Chief Hawkins decided to tear those wounds open to justify his officer's violation of policy. I noticed that Chief Hawkins said there had been recent incidents where people obtained names of officers and threatened their families. He did not say those incidents happened within the APD. And it is a fact that all officers' names can be easily found on see-through New York public website. I would ask the council that they call the chief back and ask him to produce evidence of such threats aimed at APD and then ask him to apologize for perpetuating racist notions about black men in particular and upholding white supremacy while doing so. These are not the actions of a police department that should have tear gas and rubber bullets. Yesterday, NPR reported that a federal judge ordered police in Columbus, Ohio to stop using force, including tear gas, pepper spray, and rubber bullets against nonviolent protesters, ruling that the officers did pretty much what they did here in Albany last summer. Specifically, he said they ran amok. He noted that much like in Albany, Columbus's police used force indiscriminately and without provocation during the riot spread protest and accused police of collective punishment responding to a single protester who threw a water bottle, harassed or taunted an officer by indiscriminately pepper spraying or tear gassing the whole group. The judge also pointed out that the police failed to give audible warnings or adequate time to disperse before resulting to less than lethal force, just like here in Albany. At this point, if the council cannot see that this is not a police department that cannot be trusted to follow your restrictions, that cannot be trusted to follow your policies and that you cannot hold accountable with a report, then it, the people may just have to go to the courts. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk call the next speaker?
Um, we have Kelsey Winnington.
Hi, hello. Um, I'm here today to talk about local law, see, the ban on tear gas. Um, I urge the council to pass this law unamended. Tear gas is something that has been deemed to be too dangerous to be used in times of war in the Geneva Convention, and it is being used on our own citizens. The bottom line here is that tear gas is dangerous, not only for the protesters at both peaceful protests last year during which it was used, but for the overwhelmingly black and brown neighborhoods it was used in. In both instances, it caused this so-called rioting. The irony here is that the protesters protesting police violence were then met with violence from the police. The City of Albany Policing Reform and Reinvention Collaborative specifically recommended a ban on the use of tear gas and to decrease the use of military-style weaponry by the Albany Police Department. Voting against this will mean you're voting against the will of the people as evidenced by all the comments last time this was brought up and I'm sure again as well today. But also your own police reform group you'll be voting against. For all the council members saying that you want an alternative to tear gas in the legislation, the police are already trained in de-escalation tactics, which include speaking speaking with protesters respectfully and listening to their grievances, neither of which were done during the two times tear gas was deployed last year. The police do not need exceptions to the rule of when they can use tear gas or new tools to abuse us with. They need to treat us like human beings. Thank you.
And Ms. Kelsey, can you, I don't think you stated your address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, six South Lake Avenue.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Marco Flag.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name's Marco Flag. I'm at uh five hundred Park Avenue. Um, yep, here in Albany. And uh, so, yeah, I watched uh Chief Hawkins uh give his testimony last week where he was asked to give a clear breakdown of a police operation that injured several unarmed community members and resulted in property losses of thousands of dollars. Yet he lied, spread unjust suspicion on protesters, and could not give a satisfactory explanation for why his officers disregarded protocol when, one, they were covering their badges, and, two, they were displaying racist insignia on their police equipment. It is important to take note of Chief Hawkins' methods used to blur the truth. Handpicking video footage to craft a biased narrative events, taking advantage of racist stereotypes for fear-mongering purposes, as Lauren mentioned. Um, using vacuous hypotheticals to sidetrack questioning, et cetera. Um, I was present at the South Station operation for the entire police uh operation, so I'm comparing Chief Hawkins' rhetoric to my observed experience, um, the interactions I had with protesters and my own recorded footage. Um, the disingenuous methods used before you last week should make it one hundred percent clear why the public demands a total ban on tear gas and rubber bullets. We do not trust Chief Hawkins nor his police force. We do not trust them to give straight answers to the public. We do not trust them to be held accountable for following their own protocol. We most certainly do not trust them to abide by rules governing their deadly weapons. Last week showed that the APD wishes to act with impunity. You all must take a firm stand against their aggression. The people of Albany demand that you vote on and pass a full ban on tear gas and rubber bullets. Thank you.
Thank you. Can clerk, please call the next speaker?
Uh, Robert Distelcamp the third.
Uh, here, um, Robert Distelcamp. I live at eight ten Livingston Avenue in Albany. Um, I'd had something written, but much of what I wrote was already um, discussed, but the case that was mentioned in Columbus, um it would be, I think it would be worthwhile for the police department to be aware of uh what that could mean to how they've uh handled themselves pre in a very recent history. Something I found very disturbing was the, after the gentleman was uh shot. I'm sorry, I don't look, no. Uh, after Duante Wright was shot um by the police officer in uh uh Milwaukee, protesters came out and Albany Police Department was given a golden opportunity to show solidarity with the uh citizens. And they botched it. They acted in a extremely bellicose manner. Tore down personal property, injured persons. Um, they covered their badges, which is one of the most egregious things I feel, I'm sorry, let me backtrack. In a police officer should act with integrity. They should not hurt their, the civilian populace of their community. By covering their badges, they have instead acted in solidarity with all the said bad apples who hurt and kill civilians in their when they are fulfilling their supposed job functions. And you know, that's, that's very upsetting. They had, they've discussed a lot. They've said a lot of things how they want to change as an institution, yet when given the opportunity, they revert to the siege mentality with them. with them versus the world. In regards to the ban on chemical, uh, chemical ordinance by the, thank you. In regards to the tear gas ban, I absolutely have no faith that the Albany Police Department will utilize that, those weapons in a responsible manner based on events last year, based on, based on their testimony uh, before this committee. And I do not think they should, they should have access to it. Because they have to look into alternatives to de-escalation that are not immediately bringing, bringing things up to 11, which is what tear gas non, and other non-lethal projectiles do. So I thank the council very much for, uh, for its time in letting me speak.
Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Melanie Trimble.
Hello, everybody. I'm Melanie Trimble. I'm the chapter director for the New York Civil Liberties Union in the Capitol Region. The NYCLU supports the council's propos, oh, I'm sorry, my offices are 41 State Street. The NYCLU supports the common council's proposed amendment to the Albany City Code, which would, among other things, ban the Albany Police Department's use of tear gas and other chemical incapacitants against civilians, and would closely regulate the APD's use of pepper spray against resisting suspects. In the past year, police departments across the country too often responded with force against people exercising their First Amendment right to peaceful protest. The Albany Police Department was no exception. Indeed, its behavior was careless at best and brutal at worst. Officers gassed entire crowds of mostly peaceful demonstrators from a distance without so much as a warning. One witness, a local attorney acting as a legal observer, recalls an incident in Albany. Quote, "I did not hear any warnings either to disperse or that gas was about to be administered. Instead, multiple waves of gas approached me along with groups of terrified young people running away in distress and obvious pain. Many were pouring milk and water into their eyes in attempt to alleviate the effects of the gas. I felt sick for several years, days, I'm sorry, for several days after." Indeed, it seems Albany police were in some cases willing to gas entire neighborhoods rather than attempt to de-escalate tensions. As another witness stated to the NYCLU, quote, "As I walked back north along South Pearl Street, I observed gas in the air as far up as Madison Avenue. It was clear that the police preferred to remain at a distance from the residents in the streets and were willing to gas the whole neighborhood to punish a handful of unruly protesters." In most forms, tear gas is an imprecise weapon that cannot be directed at individual persons and once deployed cannot be controlled. That's one reason it's illegal for use in combat. And one of the reasons it's indiscriminate domestic use violates the Fourth Amendment. Tear gas is not harmless. Even mild exposure can cause choking, nausea, and vomiting, and skin contact causes rashes and chemical burns. Longer exposure or exposure to large doses can cause permanent blindness, glaucoma, severe chemical burns to the throat and lungs, and ultimately respiratory failure that may lead to death. Recognizing this, several US cities, including Portland, Seattle, and Denver, banned the use of tear gas last year in all but the most extreme cases of otherwise uncontrollable violence. The NYCLU supports the City of Albany's efforts to do the same. Lastly, it should be noted that state lawmakers have already moved toward a comprehensive tear gas ban. S 809 A 6216 is a bill that would ban the use of pepper spray, CS, and other chemical incapacitants for crowd control, and would limit police to carrying pepper spray in containers no longer than 0.75 ounces for particularized use against restricting suspects. The NYCLU supports this bill as well. We hope that the common council will continue and pass this bill in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Larisse Toriente.
Um, good evening. My name is Clarisse Toriente. I live at 295 Hudson Ave in Albany, New York. Um, I'm going to keep this short and sweet, and I just want to echo my community members who came before me this evening, Lauren, Kelsey, Marco, Robert, and Melanie's testimonies. I'm asking the common council to really highly consider and to also vote on and pass full ban on tear gas and rubber bullets in the City of Albany. And thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Stubing.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity to talk. Before I start chiming in with everybody else on the ban, on supporting the ban for tear gas and rubber bullets, I do want to thank the, everyone here, the common council for passing, or I think you're about to pass, the Climate Emergency Resolution. And I just want to say, if you need any support for its implementation from my group, PAWS, People of Albany United for Safe Energy, we would be privileged to help. And I especially want to double down on the importance of measurements of the decline of greenhouse gases uh, within this resolution. So now on to my support for the ban on tear gas and rubber bullets. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, sure. Sandy Stubing, and my address is 44 Summit Avenue here in Albany. Okay, I'm just going to read through some bullet points. Basically, I'm supporting what everybody else has said. That we need a ban on the tear gas and rubber bullets. Tear gas is a chemical weapon. It was banned by the Geneva Convention. And, uh, but for some reason, we think it's okay to militarize our police with it. Tear gas doesn't distinguish between young people and the elderly and/or the healthy versus the sick, or people who are peaceful protesters or those who are using violence indiscriminate. Um, at close range, tear gas can cause severe eye and respiratory pain, skin irritation, bleeding, and blindness. Another point is that the police across the nation, including Albany, are using this chemical weapon that targets the lungs of our own citizens, their own citizens who are just exercising their First Amendment rights. All the while, we're experiencing a global pandemic of a virus that also targets the lungs. Um, the tear gas is a part of a larger trend in militarizing the police. This only adds to the prevalent notion that we all have now that police are not here to protect us. Uh, and if you live in a disadvantaged community, that is especially true. Um, I've read that the typical manufacturer warnings on a tear gas cartridge says danger. Do not fire, fire directly at persons, which the police does. Um, and the BMJ, which is an open peer-reviewed, open-access medical journal, found that rubber bullets, now I'm switching over to rubber bullets because it's part of the ban, can cause serious injury, disability, and death. And they found of the 1,984 people who had injuries from rubber bullets, 53 died and 300 suffered permanent disability. So my final point is the police culture across the nation is racist, and I fear Albany is not exempt. In fact, last fall, I took a phone call from an officer who informed me that progressives are much more likely to be violent than people who voted for President Trump. But according to the Washington Post, that since 2015, right-wing extremists have been involved in 267 plots or attacks and 91 fatalities. And this was all, these are the stats before January 6. Yep. In closing, I ask you to please not weaken the proposed ban and on tear gas and rubber bullets, and please pass it as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President Nairobi Vivas is the next speaker that I have.
Okay.
Evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. My name is Nairobi Vivas. I am the chair of the Community Police Review Board. And my address is 3 White Oak Lane. I am speaking tonight on Local Law C, and I will keep my statement brief since so many others have talked about the substance of why tear gas and rubber bullets are so harmful and should not be used. I, my main point tonight is to ask and urge this common council for a, to pass Local Law C and have a full ban on tear gas. This is the same council that has taken so many bold actions in, in my short time on the CPRB to empower the CPRB. It's the same body that, when I was being appointed, spoke to me about defunding the police. So I was very disappointed at the hesitance of many of the members to move forward and take bold action on this issue. I would like to thank council members Doche and Johnson for their firm stance, and I would urge the rest of the members to follow their lead on this issue. So many have talked about the indiscriminate use and the effects that it has, has on black and brown people in this community. I want to just say that as a member of the collaborative as well, we see that where there is an area for police discretion, there's also almost always discrimination against black and brown people. And it is your job, we are urging you to help protect this community. Part of my job as the chair of the CPRB and the CPRB as a whole is to repair the relationship between the community and the, and APD. And that trust is nearly nonexistent due to the actions that have taken place over the past year and, and years before that. So I'm urging you to help make our job easier and remove this weapon to help and to answer the calls for militarization of the police and to take another bold action in passing Local Law C with no amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Shayna Sager.
Hi, this is Shayna. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes, we can. State your name and your address for the record, please. Thank you.
My address is 411 Ninth Street. Um, I am a new resident, newer resident to the Capitol Region. And to be honest with you, I'm quite frankly appalled at how Kathy Sheehan and the chief of police handled the situation with these protesters, as well as the fact that they have access to gas and rubber bullets. If they cannot adequately address the situation that is clearly not a riot, then why should they be trusted with gas and rubber bullets? I witnessed the events that happened at the South Station. I don't consider myself to be a frequent protester, but I am a mother, and I saw a girl drug across the concrete. I saw her knocked down with shields. I saw them hit with batons, and it's disgusting. And in the back of my mind, I was thinking to myself, what hillbilly backwards place have I moved to? Is this where I want to live? Albany doesn't have a lot of people moving in. There's a lot of people moving out. But this stuff, it, it makes people think twice about making this place their home. I don't want my kids to face this when they come here. I don't want them to feel like they're going to get knocked over by police for asserting their First Amendment rights. It's absolutely disgusting. I do not think that they have the foresight or leadership abilities to be given gas that a military commander cannot even use. It's absolutely ridiculous. On top of that, the police department in Albany seems to have a fail-forward policy. Let's talk about Devin Anderson. This officer, along with the City of Albany, has been sued multiple times for civil rights violations claims, including planting drugs, beating people, lying, stealing their money. And that happened before he was made lieutenant. So let's talk about their judgment as a whole, because it certainly doesn't give me confidence that they have the ability to lead and not abuse their power. And I'm just going to say this. I spend my money politically. And those who do not support this, and Kathy Sheehan, you won't get a dollar from me. And I will donate to the max to your opponent. Don't gas people, Kathy. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Sager, I didn't catch your address. Can you state your address for the record again? It's kind of muffled.
411 Ninth Street. And also, I would like to add this. When I went to the protest, when I went to the protest, I was followed home afterwards by, I couldn't tell if they were two Proud Boys or two off-duty police officers. And the reason why I couldn't tell if they were two Proud Boys trying to intimidate me or two off-duty police officers was because the cops, some of them were dressed like Proud Boys.
Ms. Sager, I do not want to mute you, but thank you for your comments. This is not a back and forth. Thank you so much. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Uh, I have Colin Clark that signed up, but I didn't see him with us yet. Is there Colin Clark here?
No, I don't see him.
All right, Jules Figaro is up next.
All right. Hello. I'm, I'm right outside the South Station right now. My name is Lexus Figareo. We're at a protest right now, actually. Peaceful protest. 126 Art Street. Art Street, Albany, New York, South Station, where I'm at, bro. Yeah, you know, I'm not from Albany. Okay. I'm from Saratoga Springs, but my sister live out here. My family live out here. So we out here. We are living in the streets out here for a week. So, yeah, on Art Street. Um, so first of all, we want to address how the Albany Police Department acts and how they move. Chief Hawkins sat here and tried to demonize us as violent people who they can't even speak and have a conversation. As you can see, I'm sitting here having a conversation right now, monotone, regular voice. I can speak just like everybody else. We are intellectuals. We have a voice. We are more than protesters. We are activists. So let that be known as well. I am leaders in this movement. A movement for social justice, which I think the common council would be behind social justice. Because I would think that you're here to have change, positive change in the city. Uh, what I don't like is that APD is here to pretty much make their own rules, apparently. We're at the station right now. We were trying to help out one of the residents whose kid was actually shot today. Uh, and they were holding the brother in there for a long time. She wanted her kid out there. We tried to walk in there. They tried to tell us that it was illegal for us to come in there, for a few of us to walk in there. That's crazy. You can't make up your own rules by the day. It's not unlawful assembly to walk into a police station. It's a public place. If I had a problem, I need to get into a police station. I need to get into a police station. We were rushing a police station either. Eric Hawkins needs to have a public apology to the people for what he did and what he said, and how he demonized black men and women, telling us that we were wanting to rape people's families. We would never want to rape anybody. We are advocates against rape or any kind of sexual harm or any harm on people at all. We are anti-all harm. Uh, so that's just crazy. Uh, another thing said is that the real truth of it is that when we were out here in these streets, we were never told that it was unlawful ever, not one time. Nobody told that it was unlawful. There is no receipts to show that it was unlawful. We also did not urinate or defecate in the middle of the streets. There is no proof of that, show proof of that as well. We also would like to see real body cam footage, not the fake edited footage that we're getting from Chief Hawkins. Let me see when he was actually pummeling over people, when they were running over women, black women in these streets. Let me also say that it doesn't matter whether you have a black wife, husband, kids, grandchildren. Let me also say that it doesn't matter whether you have a Black wife, husband, kids, grandchildren, niece or nephew. It does not change the fact that you do not, if you support white supremacy, when you sit here watching Black women getting hit by your police. Another thing is Devin J. Anderson needs to be fired, and it needs to be an investigation into what happened in the 14th. On the 14th, there was the use of force. My sister was assaulted. I haven't heard about any internal or external investigation. Another thing is the badges. We need external investigation into what happened with the badges, not an internal investigation. We do not need the police policing the police. That doesn't work, and we don't trust that. There's no transparency or accountability in that at all.
My name is Michaela Foster. I'm also out here at Arch Street.
Foster.
I'm at the peaceful protest.
Ms. Foster, you have one minute remaining. One minute remaining. Go ahead.
I have much to say. I was the first person arrested. I was thrown to the ground as I was actually complying with the orders to move back. I was pulling me and my sister back onto the sidewalk. I've been tear gassed in Albany more times than I can count. It is disgusting to me that Kathy Sheehan and the Chief of Police and McGee refuse to meet the demands of the people when we are the people that they are serving. I was thrown down, traumatized. My shoulder was thrown out of place. I still have lasting injuries because this is what APD does. We were out here giving a speak-out. We weren't touching barricades. We had one blow horn. And we were reading our list of demands, which have been sent out to everyone. They have been made public. We demand that there is a database created in cooperation with the CPRB because police should not be investigating police. We demand that Devin J. Anderson is fired and removed from his position as he is a sex offender and has brutalized numerous bodies in Schenectady, I mean, in Albany. We demand that not only, we have a live panel discussion with Albany, with Kathy Sheehan, with Eric Hawkins and all this stuff, and we have been overlooked and forgotten every time, except for when it is time for you to come out here and brutalize us. I should not have been thrown on the ground when I was complying with orders. And it's disgusting to me that tear gas has not been banned yet.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Obviously, you're not listening, so we have to cut you off with apologies. Can a clerk, any speaker that does not follow our rules will be cut off. It's our, it's our standard policy to do so. And also, any speaker that comes on, we ask that you not defame people without proof, or you will be cut off as well. This is not the place to do that. We're not investigating anyone. We want you to be open about your comments, but we will not allow people to come on and just throw innuendos around like that. So Mr. Kimbrough, I think we passed our 30-minute first mark. Ms. Galissi said we had a couple more people, so we...
Yes, I'll make a motion to extend public comment.
Second.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. So we extend public comment for another 30 minutes. And we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. President, James Serrano is the next speaker that I have. James Serrano. Tashika Medina is the next one that I have.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
State your name and address for the record. Thank you.
So my name is Tashika Medina, and the address is Albany 72 Cleveland Street, Albany, New York, 12206. So last year, I was on Henry Johnson Boulevard while APD recklessly used tear gas in one of the most densely populated areas in Albany, New York, which is known as Uptown New York. The fact that the residents were simply in their homes while being unexpectedly gassed was repulsive to me. And nothing but lies was told by, nothing but lies was told by Kathy and the Chief about those interactions. So let's fast forward to this year because the community was never allowed to get any type of accountability for what transpired last year. We just got lies and gaslighted. So let's forward to this year. I watched Officer Anderson provoke the whole situation at the South Station. His unprofessional demeanor and downright criminal assault on a Black woman was deplorable. Then he ordered tear gas assaults on innocent peaceful protesters and smirked when I asked him, what are you doing? Why would you make a call like that? And he smirked. And this is why, you know, tear gas should not be left in the hands of narcissistic cops with arrogant attitudes. What Anderson and local city officials need to understand that they serve us, the people. We have the right to assemble, to protest our grievances. If whatever the people are saying is making you uncomfortable, then people need to check their white privilege. It is fascism with the extension of, which is an extension of, white supremacy. The day that APD attacked my friends and the encampment, it shows that white supremacy is deeply rooted in the APD system and not even the Chief that is of color is willing to do anything about it. The covering of badges, the badges and the thin blue line shields exposed Proud Boy colors and racist slurs was triggering and harmful to me and my comrades. The whole force needs to believe of their duties for the actions that day. If the city ever wants to rebuild in kind of trust with us, we have to rebuild and get all of those dirty cops out of there, period. Everyone that covered their badge should be fired, period. It goes against their own policy and it goes, it's just morally wrong. Okay, I'm coming. APD murdered, not creamed more, and got away with it. The city is still hurt about it. So when closing, no time should tear gas be used in densely populated areas such as Albany, New York. It's dangerous and it's toxic to all its citizens. And as a longtime resident in Albany and a victim of being tear gassed, I fully support the ban on tear gas in Albany. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Can the speaker, clerk call next speaker?
Tina Lieberman.
Hi, my name is Tina Lieberman. I live at 30 Aspen Circle in Albany, and I'm the volunteer Chair of the Albany Sustainability Advisory Committee. And I am coming tonight to support wholeheartedly the Climate Emergency Resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Anani. And I encourage the Common Council to vote unanimously in favor of it. The resolution serves as a reaffirmation of Albany's commitment to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions for the sake of our community and communities around the world. It also confirms our ambitious target of a 40% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, which is in keeping with the 2019 New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. It also identifies specific priority areas based on our own greenhouse gas emissions inventory that was just done this year by our energy manager. And it also identifies equity concerns and a process for moving forward with concrete action steps. And the Sustainability Advisory Committee asks that, in keeping with the resolution, the administration, Common Council, work together with the City Energy Manager and our committee to provide the human and financial resources needed to fulfill the goals established by this resolution. That's how we're going to move forward. And we look forward to submitting an action plan as well as budget recommendations at the appropriate time in the budget process for your review and consideration. And I appreciate the whole process by which this developed. I appreciate Councilmember Anani, and I appreciate the Planning Committee for really helping to add some concrete action steps and a path forward to the resolution.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Molly Dunn.
Hi there. My name is Molly Dunn. I live at 422 Broadway in Saratoga Springs, New York, and I'm here as a University of Albany grad student. So like the other community members, I demand a full ban on tear gas. And for the record, I would like to state for all intents and purposes, the Albany Police Department has qualified itself as a hate group filled with racism, sexism, homophobia, and transphobia. On April 22nd, 2021, the APD put its hatred and white supremacy on full display when it showed up badgeless and nameless in riot gear decorated in counter protest symbols to violently attack young Black trans people, young Black women, young Black LGBTQ members. Some officers were even seen cavauding with Proud Boys. Make no mistake, what we saw the Albany PD commit on April 22nd was a hate crime. Albany Mayor Kathy Sheehan is spinning a narrative that upholds white supremacy using age-old racist tropes like "they're not from around here", while Chief Hawkins is also complicit in upholding white supremacy with a trope as old as time, painting Black people as rapists and murderers, saying his officers' lives were threatened without being able to provide any proof. So my question to the Albany Common Council is, what do you plan to do with the white supremacy and homophobia and transphobia? The hate that runs deep within the Albany Police Department? I'd ask that you demand an outside independent investigation into the Albany Police Department, not only for their actions on April 22nd, but for the cultural hate that's alive in the APD that allows for these actions to take place in the first place. I also demand the firing of Devin Anderson, who in a public lawsuit is accused of saying about a Black resident, "will show this porch monkey a lesson." He then showed excessive force, including committing two anal cavity searches on the individual for trespassing. And he was also accused of making a false arrest. Thank you.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Andy Kier.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. My name is Andy Kier. I live at 83 Spring Street, and my pronouns are he, him, and his. And I just wanted to note that by virtue of sharing my name and address tonight, I'm actually more accountable tonight as a citizen than many of the sworn public servants who hid their badge numbers while on, while on the job a couple of weeks ago. Firstly, I want to also note that while I submitted a public comment in writing at the previous Common Council meeting, because there's been such a massive outpouring of public support in favor of banning tear gas, my comment didn't get to be read aloud at the last meeting. And for those of you who didn't get a chance to be on the last meeting and watch the video, even after extending the comment period, there were so many comments in favor of the tear gas ban that not all the comments got to be reached. And to the members of the Common Council, hopefully you all had a chance to read those comments. But if you didn't, much like the verbal comments that we heard at that meeting as well as tonight's, they were almost exclusively in favor of the full ban. Many of them were heartbreaking, community members sharing their experience with tear gas being awakened by its deployment last summer, trying to shield children, grandparents, other vulnerable individuals from its harmful effects. Secondly, I just wanted to note also, in tonight's caucus, prior to the meeting started, some council members drew a blank on who to invite to the upcoming caucus meeting to discuss tear gas. And really, the only idea that came out was Police Chief Hawkins or other police officers. Personally, I don't think this is something that requires significantly more discussion. We can either choose to ban tear gas or not. And I think we sort of all know Chief Hawkins' position here, so I'm not sure what additionally he would have to add to this discussion. But I'd also encourage you to consider perhaps inviting the community organizers, activists, and members of those communities who have been most impacted by the use of tear gas, as well as those that have been most impacted by police brutality, militarization, and white supremacy. Finally, I just want to highlight that recent events have shown the continued effects of white supremacy and police brutality that permeate our police department. While initially allowing the peaceful protest and encampment outside South Station to continue, the mayor and police chief made the decision to clear the protesters, giving only 15 minutes to clear the space, remove belongings, et cetera. I'll also note that this apparent change in policy was shortly after a scathing letter was put out from police union head Brett McGee imploring Mayor Sheehan and Chief Hawkins to do so. When forcibly clearing protesters from a peaceful encampment near South Station, officers modified their uniforms, decorating their gear with Blue Lives Matter insignias, obscuring their badges, apparently attempting to avoid accountability for their actions. Shortly after that, Mayor Sheehan and Chief Hawkins jumped to their support, explaining away the badge obscuring as well as the Blue Lives Matter insignias. And actually, I think you probably all saw Mayor Sheehan was forced to apologize. Thank you. She was forced to apologize after she repeated a dangerous right-wing talking point comparing peaceful protesters to white supremacist insurrectionists. These actions should make clear the clear and present danger of our police department having continued access to tear gas. While I understand you don't plan to vote on this issue tonight, I urge the council to take immediate action on this issue. Even with the massive outpouring of public support in favor of the tear gas ban, it's indicated that Mayor Sheehan may veto this legislation, which would not be surprising given her recent statements and actions. Thankfully, we have you all as a council to represent the will of the people, take an incredible opportunity to make Albany a leader, follow in the footsteps of Seattle, Portland, Denver, and other cities by banning tear gas. I urge the council to pass Local Law C immediately and without amendment. Thank you for your time.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Tracy Sangare.
Good evening. My name's Tracy Sangare. I live at 7 Cold Springs Drive in Clifton Park. Tonight, I ask that when the Common Council thinks about whether your police force should be able to use chemical weapons against people, I would like you all to think about your hopes for this community. And if your actions get us closer to who we could be, do you want to continue to foster community where the goal is to control people? Do you want a community where your police chief, the union, and officers dehumanize Black Lives Matter activists and call them aggressive, violent, confrontational, and potential rapists? While I understand your earlier statement that you do not want public comments defaming people, I'm disappointed that you don't have the same expectations of Chief Hawkins. Last week's meeting was quite shocking to me, the unsubstantiated accusations he continuously threw out that were never asked. Like, he was never asked, like, what do you mean by people were threatened of rape? People just took his word, and he was intentionally vague about what he was saying. As we all have heard many times, the system is not broken. It is working exactly as it was designed. You all are in a unique position to make a difference in Albany. You have the ability to dismantle systematic racism. You do. I mean, it's unbelievable the power you all have compared to the rest of us. You can stop state sanctioned violence against citizens. Chemical weapons do nothing to restore communities. They only serve to remind people that their government is willing to seriously harm citizens who dare to want better for themselves and neighbors. My daughter is one of the Arch Street activists who was brutalized and arrested last week. You would know her from the video because she's the one who stood motionless with a bullhorn in one hand and a phone in her other. And you can see the police throw her down with their riot shields. She had numerous officers on top of her. She told me that all of her limbs were pinned down. And while they were on top of her, the officers were yelling, "Stop resisting. Stop resisting," again and again. In one video, you can hear my daughter screaming, "I'm not resisting." My daughter told me she was sure she was going to be murdered that night, and they were going to lie and say she resisted. Her story is not even close to the only disturbing story from that evening. While it was extremely difficult to watch the videos of the violent arrests, I'm so proud my husband and I raised someone so committed to liberation. We feel blessed to know all of the Arch Street activists. And we are blessed that their dreams of liberation are part of our lives. They all push us to be much better.
You have one minute remaining. You have one minute remaining, ma'am.
Chief Hawkins and Mayor Sheehan robbed themselves of the opportunity to learn and connect to some amazing activists when they decided they had nothing to learn from them, and they chose to villainize them instead. So I'm just asking all of you, when you were young and you learned about freedom fighters and abolitionists, what did you think? Did you think they were brave and selfless? Did you hope that you could be that brave? Did you tell yourself you would do that, that you would be on the right side of history? Or did you picture yourselves as the people wearing riot gear, spraying tear gas, and brutalizing the people, risking everything for their own people? You all need to decide. Which side are you on?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have more speakers?
Oh, yes. Carly Taylor.
She was here earlier, but she left.
She was here earlier, but she left.
All right. After Carly, Kirsten Westbrook.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Westbrook, and I live at 820 New Scotland Avenue. And I'm a little bit upset now from listening to that woman's testimony. I agree with all of my community members that have spoken thus far in support of a ban on tear gas and rubber bullets. And I think they've done a great job of expounding the reasons why it's completely unethical to use these methods on anyone. But I want to take a different approach. I work for New York State, so as a public employee, I'm bound by certain rules. For example, while on a state computer, I can't access any Google products. I can't get into my Gmail in case I, you know, quick need to send a form to HR. I can't get on Google Drive, none of that. And the reason why is because there are a few people who knowingly or unknowingly would access nefarious material on that that could expose the New York State system to risk. So because of a few people, because they can't use the resource properly, nobody gets to use it. There are APD officers who have shown that they can't use tear gas or other chemical or kinetic energy munitions appropriately, which means that tear gas should not be a resource to which they have access. This is regardless of whether or not non-lethal chemical or kinetic munitions can be used ethically, which I strongly believe that they cannot. Albany Police Department officers are public employees. We need to start treating them as such. I support a full ban on the use of chemical or kinetic munitions. Thank you.
Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Jalisa Wilkins. After Jalisa, if she's not with us, I have Peter Lavinia.
Peter doesn't seem to be here either.
I also have some written comments, if you would like me to begin sharing those.
Yes.
I had Abby Harris, who signed up to speak live, but she also provided a written comment. It says, "As a longtime resident of Albany Park South neighborhood currently, I wish to make a public comment regarding the ban on tear gas. Unfortunately, I will be unable to attend the meeting tonight at 7:00 PM via Zoom due to a prior engagement. I would still like my opinion voiced for the record. I fully support a total ban on chemical weapons. Banning tear gas would be a great start. But as we have seen in recent weeks, APD has chosen to use chemical weapons beyond tear gas and pepper spray on protesters. The use of expired bear mace is inexcusable, and it is shocking that there has been no serious response to the violation of human rights in our state Capitol. The canister were left in the public streets allowing further harm to a community traumatized by past chemical attacks. I urge you to vote for the total ban of tear gas, the only moral, ethical decision." Catherine Harris provided a comment regarding green-sourced power. "I'm extremely concerned about the warming of the planet, decreasing the use of fossil fuels, and sourcing energy from renewable sources, especially wind and solar. I am the only house on my street with solar panels and drive a hybrid car. I find the city streets to be extremely walkable, and generally, the streets are bikeable, though potholes increase risks to that mode of transportation." That noted, "I am lucky to have a means to invest in these, while many of my neighbors are not. So city investment in renewable power sources is vital to enable us to lessen the risk of climate change. Please work to lead this effort." And I believe we had Dr. Green with us, who signed up to provide comment. Dr. Green?
She's not responding.
Well, I'll keep reading, Mr. President. The next comment is from Alana Klein. "Mr. President, members of the council, I hope you are all staying safe and healthy. I truly wish that my return to giving comments was not under these circumstances. These are my exact words from August 21st of 2018. There are those in the communities who have been affected by the recent violence, who have begged, pleaded for an internal hire. I feel that I must default to them. I will not vote yes or no on this hire. I just don't think it's the best choice. If Chief Hawkins is indeed confirmed, I hope he proves me wrong. When the incident on First Street happened and former Officer Luke Dear was arrested, I was, albeit skeptically, optimistic. Since then, relations with the black community have gone so far downhill that they might as well have leapt off a cliff. From the brutalization of a woman on Grand Street for double parking to the false arrest, re-kidnapping of two people on South Pearl Street, to the comments made that were revealed on BodyCan. Sadly, this type of behavior has come to be expected. This is the bad apple's argument. A rotten apple turns the bad ones rotten, and a bad apple turns a good one's bad. I remind you that it was Hawkins himself allowed the occupation to go on for six days. Not only was 15 minutes an unreasonable amount of time to demand the protesters move, but the force with which they were removed, in addition to the concealed badge numbers, was inexcusable. However, Chief Hawkins' implication, especially without proof that's otherwise peaceful Black Lives Matters protesters had threatened to commit rape and violence against officers and their families, is unjustified, uncalled for, insulting and warrants calls for his resignation, if not his dismissal. Black Lives Matter." Colin Clark, "I am commenting to demand the Common Council pass the unamended local law C and ban tear gas. Anything less than a full ban is a disservice to every Albany resident." Cecilia Mayreid McElroy. "My name is Cecilia Mayreid McElroy. I'm a sophomore at the University of Albany, and I'm writing to say I support the unamended local law C. The use of chemical weapons against civilians is inhuman and by definition war crime. It's unethical and outdated to use military-grade weapons against citizens of this country who are trying to hold their elected leaders accountable. Pass the law." How are we on time, Mr. President?
We have five minutes.
Okay. This is from Olivia Dunn. "I'm writing as a concerned citizen and mother, asking you to pass the unamended local law C and ban tear gas in our city. This is our home. It should not be a war zone. Please do the right thing and make our city for our shared American values, free speech, including the right to protest. My name is Andrew Powers. I've been an Albany resident for the last decade. I went to school here and now have started my career as a molecule biologist in the city I now call home. Never in my life have I seen the kind of reckless and abusive behavior that I have seen firsthand from APD. They have on multiple occasions employed violent tactics on protesters to whom they view as enemy combatants and not part of the community they've sworn to protect. The use of tear gas or any chemical weapons against Americans exercising their First Amendment rights is a massive violation that should never be allowed again in the capital of our state. NYCLU has condemned APD for their assault of protesters as recently as last week. APD has shown time and time again that they cannot be trusted to keep the peace, and they will only bring violence into an otherwise nonviolent situation. Arming them with chemical weapons and ballistics, projectile launchers, will only create a violence against the people of this city. Allowing APD to use these weapons is complicity in their violence. If you have a responsibility to the community that you serve as a council member to protect their safety from a police department that has proven countless times to be incapable of maintaining order without violating the civil rights of the actual residents of Albany, do the right thing. If you have never been assaulted by APD, you should listen to those who have. You have no right to put other people in danger from a police department who covered their badges during the assault on a protest encampment last week. They don't want to be accountable to the community. It is your job to make them. Andrew Powers." Kate Denny, "I'm writing in support of passing unamended local law C, which bans tear gas. I am disgusted by recent police actions against protesters and think this is a small step in working to demilitarize Albany's dangerous police force." Jordan Ferraro, 8 South Allen, Albany, New York, "Tear gas. From what I can tell, it seems the people of this community have made their opinion quite clear. They want a ban on tear gas, full stop. They want this ban passed unamended. They've provided every manner of argument from moral and ethical to its physical harm and its uncontrollable nature. They've done so clearly, powerfully, respectfully, and with a consistent determination. So with that in mind, if the council is not listening to and enacting the will of its community, then who are they listening to and why? Is ignoring the voice of those there enlisted to represent how a proper democratic body is supposed to act? I would ask the council to please listen to the voice of the people and be the body that puts the voice into motion, the democratic body that gives action to the will of its people. Thank you for your time." Sean Kelleher, 12 California Avenue, Albany, New York. "I'm here to support local law C, a ban on tear gas usage by Albany police. Last meeting, this law was debated and tabled due to some council members feeling that there needs to be amendments for times when tear gas should be allowed. This isn't acceptable. Tear gas must be taken away from the police completely. We saw recently, with the covering of their names and badge numbers when they assaulted the South Station encampment, that the police will break their own rules. Albany police have shown that they can't be trusted to follow the rules set in place for them. Whatever restrictions are placed on tear gas use, there is no reason to believe the police will faithfully follow those restrictions. The only way to truly prevent the police from using tear gas against peaceful and innocent civilians is to make sure that they do not have access to it. Pass local law C with no amendments. Ban tear gas entirely for the safety of everyone in Albany."
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie. And according to my watch, my time is that concludes our public comment period for this session. Public comment period is closed. Now we'll move on to approval of minutes. Previous meeting, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer meeting minutes from our April 19, 2021 meeting for passage.
Is there a second on that motion? Second? So, Ms. Douché, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Rule of minutes for previous meeting passed. Consideration of local laws, we have them. Mr. Kimbrough?
All the local laws are held.
Thank you, sir. And now moving on to any standing committees' reports. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The planning committee will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, May 4th, at 5:30 to discuss amendments to the USDO. And again, on Tuesday, May 18th, to discuss these amendments to the USDO. Also, we will be meeting on, I didn't write it here. The 25th? Thank you. Tuesday, May 25th, to discuss ordinance 135121 regarding small cell wireless facilities and on Resolution 374221R, which would be authorizing a franchise agreement for the installation of telecommunications equipment. And that is for Verizon Wireless. And also, Resolution 38422R, I think it is, authorizing a franchise agreement for installation of telecommunications equipment for singular wireless. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a note that the Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee will be meeting this Thursday, the 6th. We're going to get an update from the Treasurer and the Budget Office on the state of the city's finances, which includes the federal stimulus, COVID-19 stimulus. We'll also be discussing Local Law D, a local law to amend the charter of the City of Albany to provide for additional paid sick leave. Resolution 25.31.21R, which is the elimination of one full-time position's salary and the creation of another. And Resolution 33.41.21R, which is another budget piece, which is eliminating two full-time positions and creating two others. And then another 134.21.21R, which is the elimination of one full-time position and the creation of another, which will impact budgets.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Mr. O'Brien?
The General Services Committee met on April 21st to consider Resolution 10211120, honoring the life and legacy of Edwin Schruber and naming a portrait of Erie Bullard as Edwin Schruber, where he was the founder of Buckpin's warehouse. And it passed unanimously with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Igo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Law, Buildings, and Culture Committee met on April 26th, and we had a good discussion, an initial discussion on the Mayor's housing initiative, Local Law HNI and FNG. And we'll be meeting again with HNI on, let's see, May 10th, which is a Monday night, and FNG on May 13th, which is a Thursday night, and continue the conversations on this, Local Law C.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. And that is all we have for any standing reports from standing committees. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda. Ordinances introduced. We'll start with Mrs. Love. Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 12.51.21 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to the Common Council authorizing the sale to Brenda Robinson of 256 Livingston Avenue, tax map parcel number 6565-5-16, and 258 Livingston Avenue, tax parcel map 65.65-5-15.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be referral to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. And continuing on with ordinance introduced. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 135121 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 323 Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new article, seven, entitled Small Cell Wireless Facilities in City Rights of Way.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be referral to the Planning Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough, that's all for ordinance introduced.
That's correct.
There are wholly remaining ordinances?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on our agenda, going to introductions of resolutions. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 41.51.21 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the adjustment of salaries for certain positions in the 2021 budget, Department of Law.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll also be a referral to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 42.51.21R and ask for its introduction.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the creation of a position which will affect the salary total for the 2021 budget, the Albany Community Development Agency.
Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, referral to Finance.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on, resolutions introduced. Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 435120R and ask for its introduction and passage thereon by roll call vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council declaring its opposition to Waste Management of New York Inc.'s proposal to amend its solid waste permit.
proposal to amend its solid waste permit to allow the transfer station it operates in Albany South End to accept municipal solid waste.
Discussion on this resolution, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a saying called history repeats itself, and it's quite evident in this proposal by Waste Management. Back in two thousand nine, Waste Management came into the South End and attempted to put forth a proposal that would allow municipal solid waste to be sorted at its transfer site at the Port of Albany in the South End. Municipal solid waste is, in fact, garbage, is quite frankly what it is. And at that time, the community was very adamant that it was not wanted in the community. And the lasting health impacts of having such facility in the South End would be detrimental. And it was successfully fought by the community at that time. And now here we are in two thousand twenty-one. And the same proposal is put forward to, again, store garbage in the South End. The fact of the matter is, the South End and the neighboring community is considered an environmental justice community. That means that it already is, has lasting health effects from everything that was built around it, and it's a majority of minority and low-income populations. Why does the South End have to suffer and have to have garbage stored in its, in its location? It will lead to lo- long health effects, long-lasting asthma and other considerations. And the South End does not deserve to have garbage stored within its, within its site. And so I and Councilmember Johnson, two representatives of the South End, are adamantly opposed against this coming forward. And we're asking that the council supports this resolution in opposition to the proposed, proposed plan for, for waste storage in the South End. And we also ask that this resolution, after it's passed, be sent to the leaders of the D E C that will be considering Waste Management's proposal, so they clearly hear from the community and the community's leaders that we do not want waste stored here in the South End. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you. Um, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when the city was asked to do a long-range solid waste management plan, Task Force was created and we were asked to look at all of the possible solutions to municipal solid waste. And of course, one of the ones that we looked at was that waste management. And for the very same reasons that this resolution cites, we, as a city, declined to give that any serious consideration as a possible, as a possible site for a municipal solid waste. We, I forget exactly when we did this, but it was around that same timeframe. But it was slightly before D E C had issued their denial of a permit. And as stated by the sponsor, nothing has changed. It's as close to a densely populated area as it was back in two thousand nine. So I'm going to vote for this. I think it reflect, oh, and back in two thousand ten, the council affirmed that when it adopted the solid waste management plan, which checked off all the reasons why this was not a suitable part of that plan. So it's deja vu, and hopefully this will be the last time that they come back with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, as a former resident, as apprentice, you know, I think that the only difference in, in this conversation is that, is, has been pointed out, the environmental issues that already pre-exist down there. And I think that it was conversation about limited truck, trucks passage of that area. And any type of suggestion of, of an ideal like this is going to bring more trucks in and out of the port. I think that it's insensitive when they haven't addressed the issues that are already on the table that have been spoken loud and clear by the residents. And, you know, unanimous voices lead to simple decisions by me as a councilman. So, you know, I'm asking if everybody would support this. And we sent a crystal clear message that, you know, we're not going to add on to what is already a problem for, for the residents of the South, the South End, and primarily as a princess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing this is, all members are co-sponsored on this, we will do a voice vote for this. I believe, am I incorrect on that, Ms. Gillespie?
I didn't have all members as co-sponsored at the beginning of the caucus tonight, and I haven't gotten any other indications. So I think this is the one where we're going to do a roll call.
Thank you. So can the clerk please call the roll?
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Valerie?
Yes, please.
Dosche?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fahey?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fourteen in the affirmative.
Resolution passes. Continuing on with introduction of resolutions, Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution forty-four point fifty-one point twenty-one R and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
I'm sorry. Resolution of the common council of the city of Albany celebrating the contributions of Benjamin G. Garland and renaming a part of Clinton Ave in his honor.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to General Service Committee.
Thank you, sir. That's all we have for resolutions to introduce. Now moving on to resolutions held.
There is one.
Mr. Anani, sorry. Sorry, Mr. Anani.
He all said. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution forty-five fifty-one dot twenty-one R and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council proclaiming May two thousand twenty-one as Bike Month in the city of Albany.
Discussion, Mr. Anani.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is to encourage residents to utilize bikes as a mode of transportation, which cut down on vehicle emissions and bolstered the use of bike-friendly road network. Cycling has grown to be an increasingly popular form of commuting and recreation. As growing number of people recognize the health benefits, availability, affordability, and environmental friendliness of this form of transportation. The city has work to be done to become completely bike-friendly and accessible, but this is one small effort to draw attention to the issue. Supporting this resolution would demonstrate our city's commitment to work in partnership with our state, local biking advocacy groups to continue building upon Albany's bike infrastructure, such as the Madison Avenue bike lanes, and to promote the use of this healthy, reliable, and sustainable mode of transportation among city residents, as well as commuters who travel to work in our city. I want to applaud and thank all the advocates who are making the city of Albany bike-friendly. Also want to thank the mayor on making Albany a more bicycle-friendly city. I want to thank all my colleagues for a co-sponsoring this resolution. Thank you.
Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, since we're all co-sponsors, this will be a voice vote. Can you all unmute yourself? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much. Resolution passes. Continuing on to resolutions held now. Mr. Anani?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution seven dot twenty-one twenty R as amended and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution declaring a climate emergency and calling for an immediate emergency mobilization to restore a safe climate.
Discussion on this resolution, Mr. Anani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As many of us here are aware, climate change represents probably the greatest threat, not only to our environment, but to our economy. Facing a possibility of more intense storms, out-of-whack weather patterns that affect crop production, frequent flooding in some areas and droughts in others, the cost of letting this happen is too much to bear. Part of making an issue a priority is mobilizing resources of the city to do our part to avoid the worst-case scenarios facing our community. The president, this resolution served as reaffirmation of Albany's commitment to reducing its greenhouse gas emission and sets an ambitious target reduction rate of forty percent by twenty thirty in keeping with the goal set forth in the twenty nineteen New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. This resolution is a good starting point to begin acting as a city because it affirms to our residents, surrounding neighbors, and even to the world that Albany takes climate change seriously, and we're willing to do something about it. Cities around the country and the world have adopted similar resolutions, similar declarations to recognize the need to act on climate change and to highlight their commitment to doing so. I'm also proud to work with Tina Lieberman with the Sustainability Committee and to make sure we are taking the right steps as far as drafting this resolution. I also want to thank my colleague on the planning committee, Tom Howie, Julia Dosche, Kathy Fahey, for their amendments to this resolution. And not just putting words on paper, but also putting a commitment as relates to a representative from the council to work with representative from the Sustainability Committee, the city energy manager, as well as other administrative personnel, to establish clear, concrete steps to implement and enable the city of Albany to meet the goals of this resolution and to address the urgent need of now. So I urge my colleagues to join me in supporting this resolution so that we can ensure we make addressing climate change a priority. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. You're muted.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Um, since we are all co-sponsors on this, I believe so. We'll do a voice vote on this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution. Thank you. Resolution passes. Good work. Great work on this. Did a whole team who did the work on this. Great job. Continuing on, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution one oh-two, one eleven twenty R and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Edwin H. Spurber and naming a portion of Erie Boulevard as Edwin H. Spurber Way.
Question on the resolution, Mr. Kimbrough?
Uh, yeah, no, it's, uh, my way of just honoring a gentleman that's been at the forefront of, you know, business and entrepreneurship for, for years in Albany. He's done a lot for the folks of Albany. He's done a lot to provide jobs at a time when some were leaving Albany, like way back in the day. So, and this is just a way of honoring him and his family. But now I'll, I'll turn it over to both you and Mr. Johnson because I know as supporter and co-sponsor, is that you guys would like to say something?
Mr. Captain, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just would like to take this time and just say a word on Mr. Spurber's behalf. You know, I personally know the family. I worked for Huck, Huck Fins for some time and ma- maintain a relationship with him, with the family currently. And I, you know, I just want to say, if you ever go to Huck Fins, you know, they try to be as reasonable as they can. You know, their service is, is excellent. My last interaction with them, I had to bring a product back three different times, and each time I was in, I was greeted with, you know, professionalism, you know. And, and, and just the type of businesses that you want in our community. And I just wanted to make sure that I went on record as showing my appreciation for, you know, the personal support that they have provided me as well as the collective support that they have provided the capital region. And I think that I'll be excited to see that sign go up in the air. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howie, did you have your hand up? Okay, maybe you were just adjusting your camera?
Yeah, I was switching from camera to desktop, so I apologize. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, reading the article in the Times Union is what spurred me to go to Mr. Kimbrough to have the street named after Mr. Spurber. Getting to know his son, the family, they're very humble, humble people. You know, with the years of advocacy, his father has done for the city. When state workers moved out of, from downtown to the Harriman Campus, Mr. Spurber immediately talked to the mayor at the time and said, we have to do something because this is going to hurt our downtown businesses. And so he's been a very, very advocate. And for me, you know, it's just not me personally, but for the capital region. Northeast Kid- Kidney Foundation attributed him to starting that foundation with his first generous donation. And I can tell, I can say from personal experiences, losing two family members, babysitter who I knew for years because of kidney disease. And what the Kidney Foundation did for my family members and the people I care about during their times, it cannot be said enough of the appreciation of what this man has done for the city, for this area. It is more than appropriate. And because of his humbleness, because of the Times Union doing the story on him, I got to know him even more. And so when you get that type of reporting on a gentleman, a business owner who's very humble and, and, and appreciated, you know, and I could tell by speaking with his son. They're very honored to have this. Son was still surprised. It's amazing how surprised when you read what he's done for this city that this is more than appropriate. And so I, I thank all council members who co-sponsored this. And, and I, I look forward to, hope this summer unveiling that sign with, with number of city council members along with the mayor as well. So with that being said, we are all co-sponsors, I believe, on this one. Ms. Gillespie?
Yes.
With that being said, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes. Now that is the end of resolutions held. Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, no one has anything further? Make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Igo's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
I have my hand raised, President. I don't know what happened.
I, I see, but I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if it was from before.
My hand is raised, though, clearly.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was up from before. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
I, I just would like to follow up on the young man that spoke about the South Station. I'm, I'm really disturbed that, you know, we've seen an incident on, on camera that, you know, truly heightened, you know, what, what, we were already dealing with. And it seems to be no discussion on the officer and his action. You know, I asked the, the chief a simple question, and, you know, I know what I clearly heard. He said it would be, if it was done in reverse, it would have been assault. And then he tried to back out of his answer. I, I just think that, um, I just think that I'm bothered when I hear this, you know, the prior history that's been shared. And, you know, when I look at that video, there's no difference in the video of the officer Fargion, I believe his name was, that one day that he came around a corner and heightened incident. I think that ignoring people's concerns is not a good signal. And I'm just calling on to see what, you know, could be done to look into that matter, to address it, so that we can put some closure, you know, the people that they're showing that they're not going to go away until they get some answers to their questions, you know. I just think that to just ignore what everyone saw and, you know, not to mention it, it hasn't been mentioned on the city side. I don't think that that's a good look. And, you know, I just want to go on record to say that, you know, I think that that matter should be looked into somehow, some way. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, meeting adjourned.